All right, we got 6:30. We'll call the meeting to order if we could start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. With that, do we have any additions to the agenda tonight?
We do not, but we need to remove under A1B the Watertown Mayor's school introduction of the superintendent.
Okay. I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda with the deletion of 81B, the Watertown Mayor introduction superintendent.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Butterfield, a second from McNeely. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries four zero. Janelle, are you catching all that?
Unfortunately, I have the four zero, but not the motion.
I'll take notes too on the motions.
Why don't you do it? You can.
Yeah, Janelle, I'll just do it.
Okay, I apologize. It's just, it's not very clear. It's very awfully like on the way.
No, no worries.
That's okay.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Bye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yep. All right, we'll move to public comments. If there's anyone who'd like to discuss anything not on the agenda, please come forward. And if no one coming forward, we'll close public comments, move to the consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that needs to be pulled for further discussion? Hearing none, I'll look for the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries four zero. All right, Maggie, that'll take us to proclamation, a couple proclamations tonight. First one, we'll start with the Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Is there something, Maggie, that you want to discuss first, or?
Yeah, so we have a representative today. Her name is Katie from Southern Valley Alliance. They're a nonprofit organization based out of Belle Plaine, Minnesota, and they're dedicated to providing support to domestic victims of domestic violence and their families. They serve Carver County, including the city of mayor, and on their website, they have a statement that says, "We are a prevention and solutions-focused organization partnering with law enforcement, county legal systems, social services, and healthcare providers to make the communities of Scott and Carver Counties a better, safer place to live. Our journey continues as we support to empower victims, survivors, and their families, and create awareness to end domestic violence in our communities." So tonight, we do have a proclamation in front of you in order to proclaim October Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We do have Katie here. If you want to add anything, otherwise, we can just.
Katie, if there's anything you want to say, can please come up to the podium if you'd like. Certainly, no, it's up to, yeah.
Want to take my mask out?
Yeah, yeah, yep.
That way you can hear me a little bit better. Put your mic on.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Yeah. So as Maggie said, I'm Katie Schaman. I'm with Southern Valley Alliance. We are a nonprofit organization located in Belle Plaine. We provide services and support for victims of domestic violence in both Scott and Carver Counties. And on behalf of our board and staff, I'm here tonight to just thank you for the proclamation of October being Domestic Violence Awareness Month. October being Domestic Violence Awareness Month is an important time to recognize and stand up for victims and survivors. And shockingly, did you know that one in three women and one in four men in the United States have experienced some form of domestic violence within their lifetimes? We would like to think that it doesn't happen in our community, and the truth is, domestic violence happens everywhere. Last year, Southern Valley Alliance served over 1,500 victim survivors within our community, and 255 were here in Carver County. Through increasing awareness, training, and building relationships, we can empower victims, educate our youth, inform our neighbors, and partner with agencies invested in the safety and well-being of our community. So thank you so much for declaring October Domestic Violence Awareness Month and raising awareness within the community alongside of us.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, I'll read the proclamation. "The city of mayor recognizes the critical work being done by domestic violence advocates in the service of the survivors and victims they serve, whereas more than 20,000 calls are placed to domestic violence hotlines nationwide every day. Whereas, the impact of domestic violence is felt not only by individuals and families, but by communities and the nation as a whole. Whereas, the city of mayor joins with others across the state of Minnesota and nationwide in supporting domestic violence victims and survivors, as well as the advocates and organizations who serve them." So with that, I'll look for a motion to approve the proclamation declaring August Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. We have a second.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. So with that, now therefore be it resolved by the city council and the city of mayor that the month of October 2020 be recognized as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Perfect, thank you. I appreciate it. Very important. I think we've, and you can probably attest to it, I think we've seen a big uptick in domestic violence since the pandemic, with stay-at-home orders and people being there. So I appreciate everything you guys do, not only for the counties that serve, but everywhere. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Maggie, with that, we'll move to another proclamation here, and we don't have a representative, correct?
We do not. They were not able to make it tonight. But this proclamation, we did have a similar one last year, is to approve a proclamation that dedicates October 15, 2020, as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day. So a national nonprofit organization called IRIS, Infants Remembered in Silence, did reach out to the city to ask us to recognize this day. The organization works with thousands of people across Minnesota and the United States who have experienced the death of a child during pregnancy and through early childhood. So on this day, parents and families will light a candle at 7:00 PM. And so with that, they are asking the city to proclaim October 15th, I mean, yeah, October 15, 2020, as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day.
I'll look for a motion to declare October 15, 2020 as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day in the city of mayor.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries four zero. So therefore be it resolved, the city council of the city of mayor, that October 15, 2020 be recognized as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day. Perfect, thank you, Maggie. And I think you captured everything, the proclamation with 7:00 PM on the 15th. There'll be candle lightings throughout the world. All right, with that, Maggie, we'll move to 81.
Well, I'm not seeing the representative here tonight, so we were supposed to receive an update from Jason Hartman with Waste Management on the transition process. I can check in with him and.
Table it for now.
Table it.
And we'll capture it at the end of it. We'll just move it to the end if need be.
Okay, perfect.
Otherwise, we'll move it to the end, and we'll have a little discussion amongst ourselves about it.
Okay.
All right, 81C proclamation policy.
Okay, so we did discuss this at a, at the previous workshop meeting. So tonight, we did review the proclamation policy. We are getting more proclamations. We don't have a policy in place to go through those, or to process those proclamations, and we just want to make sure it runs smoothly and that we have a procedure in place as to how to get them processed, what kind of things we will support as far as proclamations and recognition. And so the policy in front of you today outlines that. There was a review of the policy at the September 28 workshop meeting, and so it's in front of you tonight for final approval.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions or clarification needed on the policy? And like Maggie said, we did discuss it at the last work session. With that, I'll look for a motion to approve the proclamation policy.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? So thank you for making the changes, Maggie, that we discussed at the work session.
Mm-hmm, yep.
With that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries four zero. That will take us to 82A Waste Water Treatment Plant Facility Study Proposal.
I'll let Dave jump into this one.
Dave, you want to just take over with that one?
Yeah, no problem. So I believe you talked about this at your last workshop. Essentially, where we're at with the wastewater plant, if you recall, we had a, some limit changes that require some changes to the wastewater treatment plant. We have a new phosphorus limit, chloride limit. The city has asked the, or given 10 years to be compliant with those new limits. We've asked for 15 years to be compliant with that. We haven't got a response from that. But through this process, what we're going to need to do is prepare a facility plan for the wastewater treatment plant that essentially is going to lay out what needs to happen to the plant over the next 20 years to ensure that we're keeping up with capacity and that we're able to meet our existing limits and the future limits, changes that we've been given. So this ultimately ties into some of the discussions we've been having with New Germany, where they've come to us initially asking if the city would consider at least taking a look at the possibility whether or not some of the things that they're trying to do to address their capacity in New Germany, that maybe mayor could provide some services relating to that, that factor into that ultimate solution. We've had those discussions. If I recall correctly, the initial response was kind of lukewarm, but the council agreed to go ahead and take a look at that as long as it wasn't going to cost the city anything to look into those options. Ultimately, New Germany and that council have been corresponding and coordinating with this, and that council has come forward and is funding a study to take a look at some of the issues that exist for New Germany and how mayor might fit into that. Cutting to the chase, yeah, at some point, we need to do this facility plan, but the timing of it is that if we're able to coordinate this and get the timing to sync with what that council is doing with their study, part of the capacity to be completed due to our facility plan will be completed as part of that study. So what we have in your packet here is an estimated fee of $45,000 to complete the facility plan, $15,000 of which would be paid for by that council, assuming that we move forward with the timing now versus waiting for the future. So with that, if you have any questions.
Any questions for Dave?
And again, to be clear, this is a study that we absolutely must have to move forward with.
You have a little time before you have to complete it here. It wouldn't necessarily have to be completed in the coming year, but it is something we will have to do as part of our.
And it seems Ryan indicated we were only about a year and a half to two years out max to have to do this, and this way, we get a third of it paid for by partnering with New Germany, who's partnering with Met Council. Okay. Any other questions for Dave?
With that, then, I'll look for a motion to approve the Bolton and Mink Waste Water Treatment Plant Facility Study Proposal. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries four zero. Thanks, Dave. All right, Maggie, that'll take us to 83A Fire Station Update.
Okay, so in your packet tonight is some information. It's essentially an update as to where the fire station committee is at with the project planning and then the architect. So at the August 10, 2020 city council meeting, a majority of the city council moved to approve a building with the construction cost of 2.8 million. And so the current design, just going back and forth with the committee and the architect, has been drafted according to that motion. And it, and what's included in your packet, the design work and the plant, the floor plans is what is, what it's at today with that construction cost. So the current design of the main floor is roughly 11,643 square feet and a mezzanine that is 1,727.7 square feet. So over the last month and a half or so, to reduce the cost of the project to meet that 2.8 million, it included reducing some square footage, making changes in areas while still meeting the needs of the department. And so part of that, part of reducing the cost was putting some of the items as alternates for the bid process, and that includes the two extra bays, in-floor heating option, instead of a, I think it's like a vaulted heating system, right, Andy? It's like a ceiling-type system.
Tube heater radiator.
And then epoxy floors and door thickness. So separate from the construction costs, I just want to, one thing we still need to think about when we're financing the project is the design cost by the architect, the FFNE current estimate, and the contingency costs. Included in your packet as well is the city planner did do a preliminary site plan review of the project, and he was able to get the site plan when it was completed for a preliminary review, provided feedback to the architect to make sure that city standards were being met. Some additional changes were needed in that process after his review, and so more alterations were made. That included the building being shifted a little bit. And so with that, a site plan review still needs to happen with the planning commission, and that's scheduled on October 20. So the project, I did include that tentative timeline that was proposed months ago by the architect, and we did put that in our presentation boards when we did open houses. That's included in your packet. It's currently in the construction document phase, which is also, more detailed information is in your packet. And then the next phase is bidding and construction administration phase. So we, me and Andy are here to answer any questions that you have at this time, but we wanted to get this in front of you as, you know, a question and answer session.
Good, thank you. Andy, is there anything you want to add right away, or?
No, okay. Answer any questions.
Maggie, can you talk a little bit more about our planning?
Yeah, so.
Took a look at it, and the building had to shift and.
Yeah, so.
A little more on that, what?
We did have, so Bolton and Mink did the site plan work. We did send, once we got that work, that information, we sent it to the city planner for a preliminary review. The initial location of the building would have required a variance because if, with option, if the bids came in favorably and the two bays were added, the two extra bays would require a variance because of the setback requirements from the back east side.
Two extra bays are, are these, these aren't anything extra, extra that what we originally talked about was, was it?
No, so.
This isn't even more, two more than what we've seen, that we've always seen?
So in order, so to get the building where we wanted it at the 2.8,
Yep.
It's everything but the two bays right now, the extra two bays. So the two, extra two bays is in the bidding process, if it comes in at a certain bid amount, there could be, the council could decide to add those two extra bays in.
I get a little concerned when we get this far down the path that our plant, city planner hasn't been involved in it earlier, that we knew, you know, hey, this won't work. We had to shift things, but I think it's important to keep him involved in this.
Yeah, and that, and that was brought up with, like, without the bays, we're fine, but without it, or with the extra bays, there was a concern about requiring a variance. And so what needed to happen was either the variance or the building would have to get feasibility to, if it got shift, could get shifted.
The whole building shift to the west?
Yes.
Yeah, five feet.
Oh, okay.
You've got it correctly. I'm wrong, but it's, you know, so here's the building, right, the asset's designed. And then there's this piece up here that is kind of that alternate, so those extra bays.
Okay.
If you were to build the extra bays, now or in the future, it gets into that setback by a couple of feet. So what ended up happening is you have this green space up here in the front of the building that it just had to slide a couple of feet towards the road into this green space. So then, John's concern was that if and when this ever gets built, if we can avoid a variance, we should do it.
Good.
Versus leaving it as it is, deciding to build this at some point and then having to come back.
Very.
And the city having to get a variance from itself to build those extra stalls.
Perfect, okay, thank you. And now, how are we sitting with the budget? Are we kind of, we think we're at the 2.8 or under the 2.8 as is? Maggie?
Yeah, with, the current design is 2.8, and then we do have the alternates as options for the bidding process, to see what they come in at.
Any other questions?
The other thing then that I have, I'd like to see as we do this and you keep track, and I like how you, you know, we have the 2.8 for the construction costs, you have then the current estimates of the FFE and the design costs. Let's try to keep an overall, try to capture everything to get an overall picture. Let's not, let's try to get in some of the Bolton and Mink, the landscaping that's going to be, you know, that we've shifted over to them versus Brunton, and just the cost of the land itself that we purchased four years ago. That should be captured kind of in the total of the entire, just so we have an overall, the entire project also.
Okay.
Will be helpful for me.
Yep.
And then timeline, how are we sitting on a timeline? Has the timeline been adjusted? As, can we get a new timeline? Do you have a new timeline?
So let me just get to that timeline sheet. So here's the timeline. So we're, I would say we're pretty much on schedule, maybe a little behind. So the, the goal is to get the construction drawing, the final construction drawings to the council on October 26, and then go, I think it takes, it's going to take another five weeks to accomplish the bidding process, but it would be at the 26th meeting to approve that and get it out for bids to see what it comes in at.
For me, it'd be helpful too from a, you know, to have these updated, you know, the project schedule and have them, I mean, even if it's not on this, it's on, if it's an Excel spreadsheet or something different where, you know, we see completed on the first, and then we're up to May 2020, and, you know, let's get an updated one if we can, so we know exactly where we're sitting.
Okay.
And what's shifting and what's, you know, keep them green if we're on track and go yellow if there's at risk and red if we're not going to meet it, you know, so we have an idea of where we're at.
Okay.
I think would be helpful. Good. I'm glad to see it's moving along. I'm glad to see we're getting to where we need to be. I'm certain it's been a lot of work. Has there been a lot of meetings with the committee?
There's been a fair amount. When we make like milestones, like, and significant changes, we do have meetings. We're going to have another one on Wednesday, so.
Are there any big challenges? You running into hurdles that you're running into that you just can't get past that you need to get us involved in? Okay.
Yeah, I think it's been.
Good. I'm glad to hear that. All right, any other questions for either the chief or Maggie? All right, perfect, thank you. I appreciate it. We'll look forward to seeing this, the updated schedule, Maggie, and where we're at, and when we can start getting ready to start wrapping it up and get it to council and get it out for bids. Perfect, thank you. All right, anything else to add? Maggie on that? Okay.
No.
With that, then, we'll move to council reports. Eric, anything to report on? Liz?
Yes, we had a community ed meeting last week on Thursday, and so they have pretty much opened up a lot of stuff, but they are staying within the restrictions of how many kids that they can have. So it's either like between one and 13 or 125 kids. They've been partnering a lot with the Carver County Parks to do a lot of the kids' activities. They're just going to start some of the adult activities here shortly. And they, at the, at their new community ed building, which was the old school, but now they've got the official signage, they're actually putting in a accessible playground for toddlers through age 12.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, so.
That's great.
Yep.
All right, anything else? Perfect, thank you. Nikki?
We have park board tomorrow.
Perfect, okay. And with that, I have nothing to report on. I don't believe I've been to a meeting since our last council. So with that, I'll look for a motion to adj, I'm sorry? Oh, yeah, thank you, thank you. Let's, yeah, let's move back to Waste Management 81A. Thank you, Eric. All right, Maggie, can you give a little update on that? Can we, I understand Jason's not here. Where, where some of this is coming from, and it was brought up from a council member a couple of weeks ago, why we haven't gotten what we've, were required in the contract, mainly recycling bins, it seems, aren't changed out at 96 gallons. Waste management seems to think we have them all taken care of. I know for a fact they're not. I see a lot of them that aren't. What can we do about that, Maggie? And it's, I guess, tough with Jason not being here.
A little tough because he was going to cover logistics and kind of the more detailed information. I just know I've been continuously contacting the company with updates, and I, I would say our biggest concern with this transition process has been recycling. It's also been some of the accounts. I could go into details about the reasoning, but we don't have to go into deep details about the detail. I mean, because some of the transition from Republic, the information to waste management was not all accurate, and so there were some issues there. Plus, for some reason, senior accounts didn't transfer. All of them didn't transfer over either. So I've been working with seniors to contact Waste Management to make sure that they're on that senior rate.
I can understand that, and that, I mean, that makes some sense to me. I get that part of it, that there's going to be some issues with that, as long as we're working through them.
Right.
Some of my concern is then with the recycling, everyone has a, that doesn't, and they knew that, they knew how many homes there were. They didn't have enough cans. They, we need to get them changed out.
Right.
And my expectation is, and should have already happened, I feel he should be here Thursday and drive around at 8:00 AM and get all the addresses that don't have them, get them changed out.
The problem is, is they have recycling on two different days. I'm a different day than you.
They'll have to do it this Thursday and next Thursday to catch east and west side, and that's something they should be doing. They should have already done that.
And see, and I was curious about that because last recycling day is when they switched out ours and several of my neighbors. But then, as I'm going down the street, it's like, okay, I got one, two, three, four people in a row that got them switched out, and now two that weren't. And then back to, and so it's just like, how is this happening?
We don't have the ability to get out to everyone and get, they have their auto dial system too that I think they should be using and should be putting that out there and letting people know, if you don't have a 96 gallon, leave it out on Thursday. Don't bring it up. We will be changing them out, and the expectation to get that done, I don't know why this is so difficult.
Because if you don't tell people what to do, you know, like if, you know, I wouldn't know, I mean, I already, I got the right one now. I mean, I had it from the beginning, but. My, my thing was is I had called them, and the representative that I was talking to had no clue. She absolutely had no clue. She's like, well, I see you didn't order a 96, and I don't see where your city has ordered everyone to have a 96. So I don't know. It's going to cost you an extra 50 cents, and she's going on and on. I'm like, okay, never mind.
Yeah, and I, so, so Jason did call. When I said I wanted them out there, it was important to get Waste Management over for this meeting. He did call me Friday, and I expressed some of this to him, and one of the other concerns is that disconnect with, when people are calling, other residents are calling, and there's a big disconnect with, to your point where they're like, what are you talking about? No, that's not right. And, and where Waste Management says, oh, no, we're done. Everything's taken care of. It's not. So somewhere, we got to get Jason out here. We got to get him, stuff shouldn't be dragging on like this.
I agree.
I, I know it may seem little in the grand scheme of things, but it's not right, and we got to get this stuff straightened out.
But you also have to be aware of every time we switch to waste and we. and recycling carrier, we've always had this issue in the beginning.
Yep, yep, and I think there are bumps.
Whether it's Randys, Public Waste Management, whatever, I think we need to seriously look at even though we want to keep the cost low for future reference, you know, there is something to be said about the continuity and not having to go through headaches of.
Wouldn't agree more, yep, that's true.
So that's something to keep in mind in the future.
Also misinformation from the city to start this as well, because, you know, we told that to call them and they said the city, but the waste management has called the city. And then I had specifically asked at one point that the city take care of this, and that's when another message went over to Facebook saying, contact waste management. I still, I still believe that waste management is a contractor of this city. I don't have the choice to decide what garbage company I want to use. So if I have an issue or the people in town have an issue, they deal with the city, not not waste management.
I have to sort of disagree, and I'm trying to, and I understand that we're the contract, we're the, we initiate the contract, we hire them to do a service, I have worked with them and I've been in contact with them the whole time, I'm going off what they're telling me to do. And I'm relaying that to the residents, I have also put my email and number out there several times saying to contact me if you cannot figure it out. I've put it out there a lot, and I, I.
You want to walk around the community with me and and I, another, another community member come up to me and says, if you can't even manage a garbage, garbage change, then there's a real problem in City Hall. It all, it makes us all look terrible, it needs to be fixed. I I don't care who fixes it, but we need to get it fixed.
Well, I, I have to say that I've done, I'm, I have been communicating with several people from waste management. I have tried my best to manage this contract, this transition, I've done everything they've told me to do, and yet it does make us look bad because there's miscommunication at the company. I don't agree that it makes us look, doesn't make us look bad, because it does. But I think we've done everything internally that we could do for a company that's not communicating internally.
Yeah, I think we need to get them out here, eight AM, we should be going around on the west side.
Yep.
And see what needs to get taken care of, and write down addresses, get them fixed. And and I agree, Liz, there, not everything goes smooth, I mean, people got what they needed, they had cans at least, but now, six weeks into this, this stuff needs to start getting resolved and be done. But no, I understand things happen, I mean, it takes time, but it's hard without Jason, without a representative from waste management here, you know, we could talk all night, so unless someone has any other suggestions that we think we should do.
It's a bug.
I've talked to Jason several times, he's said, we should try and solve them.
Yeah. All right. Yeah, maybe you can.
I think he needs to get a big truck with a bunch of ninety-six barrels out here and just drive around and do it himself.
And would it help, does, would it help to drop fifteen of them off here? And we can take, you know, if there's a couple of, if we're talking four or five and we can change it, then let's do it and let's just get it done for the residents, however, we need to do it, and if it's, stockpile a few here if they need to. But they knew how many homes we had from the beginning, they knew we had eight hundred and some homes, they should have had eight hundred of them. They should know which homes really don't have the right size, really, they should, based on their records, because they, they were looking on their list on what to give people, so they, they should.
Even if the driver could just make a note of, you know, it takes a little bit more time, but make a note when he's going through, like, oh, I need, because he can tell, I mean, it's very easy. I mean, my recycling is ginormous.
Yep, okay, let's try one more ti, let's try again with him, Maggie, if we can, and then we'll follow up again next council meeting. Any, anything else anyone wants to add to that? All right, thank you for bringing that up again, Eric, I blew past that one. Okay, with that then, we will look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.
I've always wanted to say no to the adjournment.
Yeah.
I'd like to not end the meeting.
You got an, you got, you got an opportunity coming up. All right, let's jump right into the workshop, Maggie, and we'll go right in the enterprise budget.
Maybe you need notes, Nikki did not want to adjourn.
Um, one second. Okay, so this, I just wanted to do the twenty twenty-one preliminary enterprise fund budget review. So as you know, we did a, a utility rate study back in two thousand and eighteen, which we'll go into in the next topic. So to pay for, the assumption of that study was in order to pay for future projects and maintain the costs of day-to-day operations, the city would need to operate based on growth assumptions and a rate, a race, a rate use increase of three percent. So if you look in your packet, what I'm proposing at the moment for water fund, day-to-day operations, maintenance and debt service is around five hundred seventy-five thousand nine hundred forty-three dollars and fifty cents in two thousand and twenty-one, that's a decrease of about ninety-two thousand eight hundred and eight dollars and fifty cents. The main reason being we do not have the significant projects, water projects that we have this year. We do have, and I'll talk to Dave, but we do have some in there, again, for the oh, wait, I'm sorry, that has to go into wastewater, I was, we do have a little bit to cover remaining costs that will go into two thousand and twenty-one, but most of that will be covered in two thousand and twenty. Debt service will go down a little bit because we're doing, we have some debt falling off, but then we have a little coming back on from these projects. But it's not significant, a significant amount because we're issuing bonds. And we have that kind of grace period for the first year, and so it'll be higher next, in two thousand and twenty-two. So projected revenues based on the two thousand and eighteen rate study is about seven hundred seventy-seven thousand. And so what happens if, is, is our rates are intended to cover our, all of our operating maintenance and debt service and any excess is put in to the reserve fund for future projects and maintenance. So similar to sewer fund, the sewer fund operation, maintenance and debt service is protect, projected to be nine hundred and nine thousand or about that. That's a little bit of an increase of about nine thousand seven hundred and forty-seven dollars from two thousand and twenty. You'll, actually in water and sewer, some of the more, the areas where where you will see the increases is wages and benefits section as we look into making changes in the public works department and some changes in admin staffing. There's also an increase in engineering because of the feasibility study that was just approved for the wastewater facility. Our projected revenue is based on this study is about one million twenty thousand, and then again, and the excess goes into reserve fund. So I did include kind of a breakdown of of where you will see changes from two thousand and twenty and kind of the totals and then expected revenue. So I'm open to any questions on these so far.
All right, any questions on? I certainly see the reduction on them, I like to see that it's downward, you know, it shows again we're getting ahead on some of this stuff and getting some things paid off and, so that's good. Otherwise, it looks right in line to me, any other comments, questions on that? All right, perfect, thank you, no, that looks good, Maggie, keep up, keep up on that. Don't get a lot of question on reductions, do you?
And then the next item is the top topic of two thousand and twenty-one, water, sewer and stormwater utility rates. So again, in two thousand and eighteen, we did a utility rate study and that is, I believe I included that in your packet. I did meet with the financial advisor and he did recommend keeping it at three percent inflation for now, for this year, and then reassess next year. Just because we do have the projects going on this year into next year, and then we have potential wastewater projects coming up in the near future as well. So I did provide you with what those rates were. And then also I gave you some bill examples, kind of what like a single person using two thousand gallons, what their bill change would be, and then a family of four. So I'm open for discussion on this topic as well.
This will be our third year in of the study, correct?
Yes.
You know, I appreciate the numbers. You know, we, we had the study, study was done for a reason, the study makes sense. As of now, you know, obviously, we got to see where we end up, you know, with our final levy and and we're all at is, where I think the final decision gets made on what we should do, should or shouldn't do, but I think at this point, I, I think we have to stick with our study and stick with our long-term plan and and it may have to increase. But again, for me, I get, I need to see where we're going to end up at the end with our, our final levies and tax rate. I, I mean, I understand the importance of it, but there may be a need where, at one point, I know we've talked about where maybe one year we do take some, we don't do it one of these and we extended another year going forward, but we'll just have to see where things come in at.
And I think, and I, I agree with you, I think we're just going to have to look at where we're going to be coming with our levy.
Yeah.
But if there's a year to kind of take a break, this might be a year to take a break.
Yeah, or cut it down to one and a half percent or something, you know, get some, something in there, but you know, there is a need to do this, we know there's a need for this, we know what that study meant and what it's all there for, but yeah, this is great, let's keep this up on the forefront, Maggie, as we get through and as we start talking the budgets and, you know, we know there was an increase with garbage now and we know there's, you know, so we know some things are starting to go up, but I think we just need the overall picture as far as I, where I stand. But this is great, this is good, thank you. Anything more, any other comments?
I mean, I think we're doing the right thing by, we slowly did it, instead of doing it all in one year. Doing it over time, and I think our fund balances are looking a lot healthier now, so we can do those projects that we knew were coming up, so I feel like we're.
And I, and I do think, I, I think there's a good opportunity for an education standpoint on this, you know, because we do see a lot of, there's, there's a lot of comments and concerns about how much our water is costing, and I think a lot of the residents don't fully understand why they are so high, and, you know, a lot of them want to compare to other cities and where they lived before, and I, and I get that, but I think there's a good opportunity for some education too, that we can get out on, on some of our newsletters and in the water bills and some of those, explaining why, why it's, it is where it is.
And now understanding the foundation that is needed and our foundation is different from surrounding communities. And people just don't understand that, you know?
You know, and when we built all the infrastructure and all this was, was, was set on doing seventy-five homes every year, and then we would have been fine, and then we went in the recession and we went to zero homes and and, you know, just some of that background and some of that education for people, I think would help, help a lot for them to understand, oh, that, that makes sense. Just from when all this infrastructure came in, when the development started.
I, I don't understand, ours was different than water towns, like I, until I sit here and learn about it.
And we have state-of-the-art facilities too, I mean, our facilities are, are top, top-notch facilities we have from our, our water filtration plant to our water tower to our wastewater treatment plant and
We have good infrastructure for our town.
A lot of awards that we went, you know, that we get from that, so I think it's a good opportunity to get some of that out there. All right, anything else on that? All right, with that, then I'll.
We can't vote on this.
We'll adjourn.